Good evening. I hereby call the Palm Springs Regular City Council Meeting of May 11th, 2023 to order. At this time, I want to welcome Colby Bell Seacrest to the mic. She is 10 years old and a fourth grade Gates student at Catherine Finchy Elementary School. She has three sisters and they all love dancing, but she can do the most gymnastic tricks, more than her sisters. So go ahead.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, Colby. We appreciate it. And as always, if you have a child in the school system that wants to participate and lead us in the pledge, please let us know. All right, City Clerk, can we have? Oh, we're missing our City Clerk.
You can simply announce for the record that all members are present.
Okay, fantastic. All members are present. Thank you. Our next item is acceptance of the agenda. The City Council will discuss the order of the agenda, may amend the order, add urgency items, note abstentions or no votes on consent calendar items, or request consent calendar items be removed for a separate discussion. I'd like to entertain a motion for acceptance of the agenda. Are there any items staff or a council member would like removed for further discussion? Councilmember Holstich.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to pull Items 1K and 1N for staff reports.
Thank you. And Mayor Protam?
Yeah, I'd like to pull Item 1D, and I have comments on a couple others.
Fantastic. And I also want to make a correction on Item 1M, as in Mary. The correct budget amount is $43,500, and what's in the report says 40,500. So not a huge difference, but there is a discrepancy there, just for the council and for the public. Councilmember DeHart.
Item J, please.
Item 1J. Okay, thank you very much. Thank you. All right, thank you, everyone. Do we have a motion to accept with the removal of 1K, 1N, 1D, and 1J? We have a, okay, I see. We have a motion by Councilmember Holstich and a second by Councilmember DeHart, and we can all vote on our little screens now. I think you have to use the big screen. Oh, and it still says I'm absent. There we go. All right. We're still getting used to our system. City Attorney, can we have a report on closed session, please?
Yes, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council, members of the public. The City Council met in closed session to discuss the items that are listed on the agenda, and there was no reportable action.
Thank you very much. The next item is public testimony. This time has been set aside for members of the public to address the City Council on non-public hearing agenda items only. Public hearing items will be taken at the time of that public hearing. Two minutes will be assigned to each speaker. You're asked to please begin your time by telling us what agenda item or items you are speaking about. If there is any written comment that you wish to distribute to the City Council members, please hand that information to the City Clerk. And we will begin with Alan Potash, followed by Jennifer Gibson.
Well, thank you today. I'm Alan Potash. I'm the new CEO for the Jewish Federation of the Desert, and I'm here because I understand that there's a proclamation in process recognizing Jewish Heritage Month, and I just want to thank the council for recognizing that and the effort that you do. And this morning, I was at the Harvey Milk Breakfast and saw many of you there, a fine event, and it was my first opportunity to really be in the convention center and to be in a room with well over 1,200 people. I think it was phenomenal. I just want to recognize Jeff Hawker over here, who's my publicist, who's been encouraging me to come to say hello to you for quite a while, but I needed a real reason, which is the proclamation, to come and do that. And then Jen Gibson for putting forth the proclamation to the city. Just want to thank you all for the work you do, and I love being in the desert, and it's been great to be here today, and thank you for the work that you do.
Thank you. Next speaker is Jennifer Gibson.
Hello. My name is Jennifer Gibson, and I'm here to talk about Jewish American Heritage Month. First and foremost, I would like to express a heartfelt appreciation to all of you for making this happen so quickly. I submit the request yesterday expecting no response, which happens in many cities, and I was very quickly responded to, and the proclamation has been sent out to all of you and hopefully approved. But I just wanted to say a few words about Jewish American Heritage Month, which was established in 2006 to celebrate and recognize the significant contributions of Jewish Americans to the history, culture, and economy of the United States. It is a time to honor and remember the challenges, struggles, and triumphs of the Jewish community and to promote greater understanding and respect among all communities. The month of May was chosen to coincide with the arrival of the first Jewish immigrants to America in 1654. I'm not from Palm Springs, but I was doing a little digging on my way here, and I have been amazed by the vibrant Jewish community and how much they have played a vital role in the city's history and development with many of Palm Springs' most iconic landmarks, once being owned and operated by Jewish entrepreneurs. From the early settlers who arrived in the early 20th century to the wonderful Jewish community that exists here today, Palm Springs has been a place of opportunity, hope, and resilience for many Jewish Americans. In closing, I would like to once again express my gratitude to the mayor and the City Council for their proclamation of Jewish American Heritage Month and for their ongoing support of the Palm Springs Jewish community. Palm Springs is known for being an inclusive and diverse city that celebrates and respects its residents' cultural heritage. This recognition of Jewish American Heritage Month is a testament to the city's commitment to promoting acceptance and understanding among all of its residents, regardless of their background or faith. Let us use this month as an opportunity to celebrate the rich and diverse history and heritage of Jewish Americans and continue to work towards a better, more inclusive future for all. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Michael Joseph Pitkin, followed by Zachary Daniel Stone.
Michael Joseph Pitkin, All allocations. I qualify for paratransit. I have my out-of-state ID cards. I have not applied for California ADA certification ID. When I left IHP, I used Jewish Family Services of San Diego to cover my transportation. They provided free Sunline bus passes. I accessed this service and received a week and a half worth of trips a month. Lately, I've received two days a month. CVAG explains, "We do not control how any agencies disperse the passes." CVAG.org explained, "There is no federal grant but a private community donation bus program. Each city donates 3,000." Palm Springs, I ask for a much larger allocation to this program from cities. JFSSD explained, "They were receiving 200 adults, 195 senior disabled from CVAG. If these were to be distributed as a 30-day allocation to an individual, they would serve seven people a month. Now they are allocated 50 regular and 50 senior disabled. As a 30-day allotment, this serves approximately three people. This is not sufficient to address the need. I ask that the day passes be phased out for 30-day bus passes. In my experience, one important medical, housing, jobs appointment can generate about two to three additional trips. Example: pick up laundry detergent, laundromat, a drink when it's 100 degrees out, library, the store. Regular life takes several trips for just one important appointment trip. When talking about five important appointments, really, we are talking about 20 rides to accomplish these five appointments. Instead of first come, first served, I ask CVAG to create a database where a number is assigned to each client. No double dipping between agencies. Another option is to allocate funding to Sunline, allowing free bus service for all across certain routes. I recommend lines four, two, and one. This will allow Palm Springs' poor, disabled customers to go valleywide and allow tourists the ability to ride without having to dig for phone, cash, or tickets."
Thank you. Next speaker is Zachary Daniel Stone.
How's it going? Well, that was actually really exciting. I, uh, mine's gonna be really boring right here, so I hope you guys were taking notes on that one. This one you'll have to take notes on. I'm talking about Item 1A. It's a real sexy item. It's, uh, what is that one? I had it a second ago. I think it's on virtual meetings. So I wanted to say thank you to the council for looking at this and continuing to have virtual meetings and wanted to encourage a few things with that, and one of them happened to be with Robert's Rules of Orders, which we do open these meetings up and close the meetings, and it seems that there's total chouse or kouse or chaos in between from the way I'm looking at it. So with my time remaining, I do want to tell you a little bit about Robert's Rules and how that applies to 1A and virtual meetings. There's a new book out. This book is, let's see, I brought it the last time. Robert's Rules of Orders: Fast Track. It also has best practices for virtual meetings, something I think that council wants to look into and make sure we adopt best practices for virtual meetings. Let's see, making sure that everyone has the opportunity to participate in these meetings with confidence. With this, yesterday, I was looking through Robert's Rules, and with these 55 seconds that I have left, let's keep going here, noticed that General Henry M. Robert passed away May 11th, 1923. That is 100 years ago today. History. History occurred 100 years ago. Robert's Rules of Orders, you know, it was one where I thought, oh, can I take 30 seconds here and we just have a moment of silence and just honor? Yeah? Thank you.
The next item is the consent calendar. I will undertake a motion to accept the consent calendar. Oh, we already did this. We're moving on. The first item is Item 1D, which I believe was Mayor Protam. So go ahead. If you want to introduce the topic or do you want a staff report on it?
I want to actually, I can just ask.
You can, Mike.
I can just ask my questions about this. This is regarding the outside auditor for the TOT. Questions? I understood that, hi Chris. I understood that we had originally done this when, when we did not, during the COVID, when we did not have the accountants to do the audits for the TOT.
Yeah, that's true. So we did a sample of the vacation rental property owners of 250 of them out of around 2,500, and we began to send out notices for those audits early in 2020. We had to not act on those audits because of COVID and the amount of people that the Finance Department was left with. We reassigned staff to other positions. So we actually didn't get a chance to start and complete those audits till early in 21. We did complete the entire 250 late in 22.
So what is the, what revenue are we getting out of it versus the expense that we're spending?
Recoveries, now this is combined, so this just isn't our third-party provider. We couldn't get a break out of what they produce versus what we produce, but in year-to-date '23, we have about $386,000 in recoveries. In '22, we had about $425,000 in recoveries. And there's a couple of large items in there that I do know that was done internally, but there are recoveries that are obtained by the third party.
Okay, so, but more than the cost we're spending on the auditor?
On the audit staff.
The outside auditor.
Yeah. Well, the, the not, yes, annually, yes, because the not-to-exceed contract we're asking council to approve is five years, $570,000. So on an annual basis, we feel that they could potentially have been paying for themselves, even though we haven't done that analysis to break out what they recover versus what we've recovered.
Okay. So this has come up at a couple meetings with some of the hotels and vacation rentals, and so what I would just ask is that you confer with some of them just so they understand what the process is, what we're doing, because I think some of them think that we're auditing every single vacation rental and hotel, and see if they're having any issues with the auditors to ensure that it's productive.
Absolutely. We will do that for sure.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, is there a motion and a second? Motion by Councilmember Holstich. And there's no second listed. Not letting me do it. I will second it. For the record, my vote is yes. It looks like the call was made before I had a chance to press the button. I'm sorry, we're doing it again. All right, motion passes. The next item we will turn to is Item 1J, Approval Memorandum of Understanding with the Coachella Valley Association of Governments to provide case management and outreach services to homeless individuals in the Coachella Valley for a term of three years at $100,000 per year. Councilmember DeHart, you pulled this. Do you have a question or would you like a staff report?
I just wanted to share with the public the staff report so they could see what, one more thing that the city's doing.
Fantastic. Go ahead, Jay.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Protam, councilmembers. The Coachella Valley Association of Government, since, I believe, 2020, has launched a program that's aimed at targeting the most chronically homeless individuals. It's very focused, and what they want to do is help resolve the challenges that those individuals are facing. They work closely with the police in all the cities in the Coachella Valley to identify those that do seem to be popping up most on the radar, and the goal is to get them housed. And these are probably the most challenging cases, and our involvement, every year, we have been involved by providing the contribution of $100,000 annually, and they had recently approached us and said, you know, wouldn't it be a great idea if we just kind of locked this down into an MOU for multiple years so we don't have to continually come back? And so that's, that's why this is the three-year MOU as opposed to the annual MOUs that we've been executing with them.
Great. Thank you very much. Council, do you have any questions or comments on this item? All right. Councilmember Holstich.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll just add comments if I can. I was proud to chair the CVAG Coachella Valley Association of Governments Homelessness Committee for a number of years, and our CV Housing First program is really successful. And I just want to read out the numbers, if I can, for the staff who might have not read the report. So this shows in 2022, CVAG assisted 119 individuals finding crisis stabilization units. Those are apartments and hotels with services. We have people who can stay up to 90 days, and they're also helping people outside of the program. And as Jay mentioned, these are chronically homeless. People have been homeless often for one year or even up to 10 years or longer, so the hardest to house, and the success rates are really impressive. I think it's over 70%, and we're actually tracking people year over year to make sure those people stay housed. They work with our police department and police departments and hospitals and social service providers all over the region so that we can generate the list. So really proud of this work, and, you know, I know I say this a lot. People say there's no current shelter in Palm Springs, but that doesn't mean that people aren't being housed in Palm Springs and exiting homelessness from our streets into permanent housing. So thank you to council and staff for your support of this item.
Thank you.
With that, I'll make a motion to approve.
Great. We have a motion and a second, and council can vote. All right, 5-0, the item passes. The next item is 1K, Accept the Housing Element Annual Progress Report for the 2022 calendar year for filing with the California Department of Housing and Community Development. Councilmember Holstich, you pulled this. Do you want to open us with?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is an incredibly important item, so I pulled it for a staff report to share with the public, and also the charts are very difficult to read. I believe that's probably what the state requires, so if staff could just go over that in your presentation. And then also flag for council if there are items that we should be discussing as we talk about our annual progress, to get to our RENA numbers, which are regional housing needs assessment numbers that are required by the state. That's 2,500 over the next few years, so hoping to hear from staff what proactive planning is going into getting to that number as well.
Sure. Thank you, Madam Mayor and council. Good evening. The item before you is our annual report for the Housing Element, which is one of the chapters of our general plan. We are currently updating that chapter of the general plan, but we still use the RENA numbers that were given to us a couple of years ago to see where we're at in achieving the cycle or the eight-year period, which is the sixth cycle. So this staff report just kind of outlines the data that the state requires for each city. For Palm Springs, the tables, as you mentioned, are fairly difficult to print out and provide in a legible format, so what we tried to do is put it into an 11-by-17 view so that you can kind of see some of the details if you were interested. But we did summarize the data that we provided for each of the 12 tables in the report, namely, the most important items in the report are probably Table A, Table A2, and Table B. Those are the tables that discuss or identify the city's progress or what data we have relative to new entitlements that have been submitted. That would be Table A. So in summary, for 2022, we had a total of 21 applications for new residential development in the city. That included a total of 33 units for the city last year, and that was for single-family homes and two condominium developments. Table A2 is the progress that the city made in 2022 relative to new construction, so basically building permits that were issued in 2022. There were a total of 448 units permitted in 2022. On Table 3, we summarize how we identified those units relative to the various income levels that the state requires cities report, from very low income to above-moderate income units. Majority, you know, historically, cities don't have, or at least Palm Springs, hasn't had a problem meeting the requirements for above-moderate units. It really has been a challenge for cities and Palm Springs to accommodate the very low to moderate income levels. So what we've identified here is that we have had, we did have two affordable housing projects that did issue permits in '22. That was the Monarch Apartments and Vista Sunrise II projects, so that helped us in achieving some of the lower-income units that are necessary for this planning period. We also identified ADUs or accessory dwelling units as helping the city meet our lower-income allocations. So there were a total of 34 accessory dwelling units last year that had permits issued. And so lastly, the other table that probably has some significance is SP9 units, so lot splits and two-unit developments in the city within the single-family zoning districts. We did have two applications in 2022, but there was no reportable information that we reported on the 2022 report because those were not issued last year. So we expect those would be issued or have been issued this year. But to go back to the RENA allocation, again, that's on page four. There are a total of 2,500 units that are required for the 2021-through-2029 planning period for our RENA allocation through 2022, which basically, so it's been a year and a few months. It started in October 15th, started on October 15th of 2021. So a year and a couple of months, we've had a total of 563 of that 2,500 unit. So that is basically the report. I have to answer any questions that council has.
Are there any questions from council? Comments? Mayor Protam?
Yeah, just, first question, is the 34 ADUs, those were newly built or existing ones that were then?
Those are new permits for new construction.
Oh, okay.
And that could be anything from a detached structure to conversion of a garage.
Okay. Okay. Great. And the other question is, are we, I know that we've been, previous councils talked about rezoning certain areas, like in some of the shopping centers for multi-story, multi-family housing. Is that moving forward?
So part of the general plan update is the Housing Element, and so we're looking at various ways to remove barriers to producing more housing units. There is some rezoning that's part of that proposed plan, but it's not significant. We did start this process a few years ago, but I think that we've seen more of a need. So we're looking at some ways that we can accommodate that.
Okay. And when we get to the other item that was pulled, it's the housing and homeless is one of our key objectives, and we have another 2,000 homes to build by 2029 in six years. So this often comes up with people asking about density and whether we want to have more open spaces, which we do, but we also have to look for places to put these 2,000 homes. So I thank you for the work. I appreciate it. I just, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. When is the general plan update happening?
So we've submitted our second revision to our Housing Element. That was at the end of March, so we hope to hear back from the state at the end of this month to get the green light to adopt our Housing Element. So if we do get a green light, then we would have hearings with Planning Commission and council this summer.
It's for the Housing Element. What about the overall general plan update and zoning update, like Mayor Protam is asking about, about the zoning changes to allow for more housing in traditionally industrial or commercial areas?
So the Land Use Element, we have the draft that was published today, and so that's available on psgeneralplan.com, and that will be reviewed by the General Plan Steering Committee next Thursday. So once we get to the steering committee, we'll hear comments and look at potential revisions, and then from there, it would be scheduled for Planning Commission after, well, it's part of, there's four, I should say, there's four chapters that we're updating. So the Land Use Element is one of those chapters, the Housing Element is another, and then the circulation and safety elements are also part of the update. So we're kind of taking each one at a time, and so Housing Element and Safety Element have been drafted, the Land Use Element is now drafted. So after we get through those three, we're going to bring the circulation element forward, and so we expect probably the And so we expect probably the Housing Element to occur first because that's the most imminent and most important, given the timelines that the state has statutorily. So that would come forward to counsel sooner, within the next couple of months, we hope. And then the remainder of the update would probably occur in the early fall.
Great, thank you.
And I was just going to touch on the question about the zoning. So following that, we do have direction and included in our draft budget money to begin the process of a comprehensive update to the zoning code, so that would then implement the changes that we're making to the general plan. And through that comprehensive process, we can look at the other questions that you're raising today in terms of eliminating barriers to housing production.
Thank you. I look forward to the Housing Element coming back to counsel, and then we can have some of those conversations about proactively planning for housing. You can see on this chart, the council's being proactive about extremely low, very low, low housing because that's traditional affordable housing, and we're doing incentives there. But if you even look at moderate, to only have 14 permitted units when we have 500 to build is concerning. So I look forward to having those conversations when that comes back to us. Thank you for your work on this.
Thank you very much. And just to add on to that, I think one of the things that we're looking at when we see this Housing Element is very few moderate, and even when we're looking at above moderate, that's 120% or above, and we're looking at units, luxury housing, right? So we're looking at 300%, 400% above moderate income, and that's been a problem that we've had across the state, is that above moderate really means luxury, and that's not, that's not what the point is. We're supposed to have a middle ground there as well. So these are a lot of big discussions that we need to be having, and I appreciate this, all of this information being presented so that we can see what we, where we need room to grow and what we can do in the future. Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you. I would just add, you know, we are certainly, as folks are coming in to begin the development process, we are absolutely advocating for affordable housing development where we can, and certainly working with Jay's team and some of our housing coordinators, looking to plug them into available funding. But it is a difficult conversation in that we establish these targets, and then there aren't a lot of tools to help them pencil it out. So that's something we need to work at.
Yeah, we welcome moderate income housing in Palm Springs, lot splits, all you Deepwell folks. Anyway, all right, we have a motion in a second, and we can go ahead and vote. And the item passes 5-0. The next item is Item 1N, Report on City Council Strategic Visioning Session. City manager, I think if we can get a report out on this to start, that would be great. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And I believe Assistant City Manager Teresa Galavan is going to update us on the report.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers Teresa Galavan, Assistant City Manager. This report out is on the City Council Strategic Visioning Session, which was held on April 3rd to establish priorities for the next two years of the City Council at a high conceptual level. It was important to identify the programs and projects that the City Council wants the City Manager and City staff to be working on over the next two years. And the session was held in closed session because council priorities are key expectations to set for the City Manager and will be used as tools to evaluate City Manager performance. The city reports out the council priorities as a public agenda item, as we are today, and also incorporates them in the budget process, which includes several public meetings, including a public hearing. And that process allows us and the City Council to obtain stakeholder input. The council held a visioning session prior to the adoption of this fiscal year budget, the 2223 fiscal year budget, and it identified four priority areas. The categories of quality of life, environmental stewardship, community infrastructure, and good governance. Within those four categories, there were 15 goals and 50 objectives that were identified, ranging from improving homelessness and building a navigation center to enhancing service levels and creating training programs. During this year's visioning session, the council moved to a two-year strategic plan to mirror the new budget format that we're moving to, a biennial budget format. The council also focused on differentiating between council goals and objectives and staff goals and objectives, and really focused on the purpose of the strategic plan to convey the council's highest priorities as policymakers. So with that in mind, the council recognized that the goals under environmental stewardship and good governance are really incorporated into the objectives of staff and the City Manager oversight and operations and service levels that are overseen by the City Manager. So these items, these two categories and those objectives and goals under those categories, they don't go away, they just become part of the City Manager's oversight and our day-to-day operations. And they were incorporated into the overall major themes and principles that the city has. So environmental stewardship and good governance, which we are now calling forward-thinking governance, were incorporated into the theme social equity, environmental stewardship, and forward-thinking governance underpin all priorities, programs, and projects for the city of Palm Springs. So based on council direction, the strategic priorities now focus on two major categories, quality of life and community infrastructure, with seven goals. Under quality of life, there are four goals: to improve homelessness, crime reduction, improve affordable housing, and economic development. Under community infrastructure, there are three large goals: to improve city facilities, work on the five-year capital improvement plan, and community design. Within these goals, there are 22 objectives that range from completing the navigation center to continuing advocacy for the West Valley College of the Desert Campus. The updated strategic plan is attached to the staff report, and these goals and objectives are not meant to be all-inclusive or exclude work that doesn't fall directly into these categories, but rather it's a document that helps us march towards the same goals efficiently. Similarly, many of these priorities, like improving homelessness and reducing crime, these are very large projects, large-scale priorities that may remain important for many years, and the task-level work may change, but the priorities may remain. So with that, staff recommends that counsel affirm that the priorities you set during that session have been accurately reflected in the attached plan and receive and file this report so that it may guide us as we work on budgeting and planning work for the next two-year budget cycle. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Do you have questions or comments from counsel? Mayor Protam?
Just wanted, because I've had some comments on this, that the, there still may be, just to clarify, there still may be council initiatives that fall under what the, under environmental stewardship and other things that are really falling under the City Manager, that we're not just leaving them to them. We'll have, we'll have specific proposals and ordinance and agendas that will fall under that, that may occur in the next two years. I just wanted to clarify that.
Great, thank you very much. Councilmember Holstich?
Thank you. I have a request, and seeing where counsel is on this, and remind me where we landed. But I know we added social equity and environmental and sustainability as overarching themes, as you just mentioned. They're here listed in major themes slash principles, but they're also with things that are maybe less important or not, you know, it's a long, a long list of focus on issues most impact quality of life. The graphic itself doesn't list social equity and environmental sustainability, and we use the graphic a lot. So I'm wondering if the, and I would hate to pass a strategic plan that doesn't talk about sustainability when we look back in a few years. So I'd love to see an overarching box here in the graphic that shows sustainability and environmental stewardship and, excuse me, social equity as those overarching principles, just so that they're listed, so that if the public glances at this, they know that we're still addressing that. I think that would be important if, if counsel agrees. Or you could list it out separately as major themes slash principles. You could also say, you know, overarching principles or something different, but I'd love to see it on the graph because I think that's what most people look at, and we rely on the graph a lot as we're going through the strategic planning years.
Thank you. I support that. Do we? Mayor Protam?
I do too. Are you making a friendly amendment to Councilmember Middleton's?
Okay, do we have a second on that motion?
So my motion is to approve the strategic plan as presented, but add the overarching principles of social equity and environmental and sustainability, separate them out from major themes and principles, and put them visual on the graph on the second page, either above or below, in a way that denotes that we are working on those as well as priorities.
Councilmember DeHart?
I also heard you mention possibly having it stand out and highlight under major themes and principles. I like it standing out as a separate line item, so it draws more attention that way instead of putting it in the boxes to get lost a little bit. But I do like having it stand out separately under major themes and principles.
Councilmember Holstich?
I'm fine with that, I just don't think it's in the right list, so however, staff could denote that.
It's own standalone.
I agree, I would have it as part of the graphic somehow. I mean, just what's there is move over those major themes and principles, the social equity and environmental stewardship, as to a, you can put the rest to the good forward-thinking governance, put that whole line into a, its own box underneath the graphic.
City manager and assistant city manager, does that make sense to you?
Yes, I think we, Mayor, council members, I think we can easily accommodate that. We'll take a stab at it and try to get it in the format that looks good to you, and we'll send it out to you and then include it for the record.
Thank you. And just to be clear for the public, this isn't changing anything that we decided, it's just reorganizing it graphically. All right, we, if we have a second, we have a second, and we can go ahead and vote. All right, we actually do, yes, go, Mayor Protam has comments on a few other items, please.
On the consent calendar, we approved, there's two public arts projects here, The Crawler and The Only Other Thing is Nothing, which on Block H of downtown, in front of the museum and Museum Way, which, which I like both of those projects, I think they're great, and they're two local artists. I know one of them is here, I see. And, but what I did want to raise, and I'm just hoping we get council support going forward, is that we focus on other parts of the city in addition to the downtown. This came up last meeting, that Victoria Park is going to be without a playground for a year. They actually have one piece of public art in the whole park that was donated from Victoria, Canada, and one at the fire station across the street. But that would be a great place for kid-friendly, interactive public art. I have spoken to the Chair of the Arts Commission, I think he's going to present, talk to the commission about it, but hopefully we get council support for Victoria and other places in the city that also could help fulfill a need, for example, like when we don't have a playground, that could be things for the kids to do. So that was just my comment on that one. I comment on 2E, the 1.8 million for the Bono concourse, the podiums, the signage, the lighting, which I think we all support, is, I brought this up last during the budget session, that we make sure that we have some design, overall design plan with the airport because these things will keep coming up, and as we've seen in the past, sometimes they've conflicted with each other, we haven't had a design sense, and that it's important that there's a style guide for the airport moving forward. And the last two I wanted to comment on are 1F and G, the HVAC maintenance and installation, and the building repair and renovation contracts. Both of the awardees are not that local, there's one out of Redlands and one out of Diamond Bar, California, and I think, I know the unions would like us to have more local workers, I think we all, for our economy, would like it, and I think for our residents would. So I brought this up, Kim Baker had raised in procurement the idea of having more local fairs and reaching out to help locals understand how to apply for contracts with the city, and I think this is, these are examples of where we, projects that would work. We have HVAC maintenance and installation companies here, we have building, repair, and renovation companies here. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And just to get a sense from counsel in terms of providing direction to public arts regarding encouraging art throughout the city, is there support for that from counsel? I hear, I see a nod from Councilmember Holstich. I support that as well. Okay, just so that staff knows. All right, we do need to approve the consent calendar items that were not pulled, so is there a motion to accept the consent calendar items without 1D, 1J, 1K, and 1N?
Don't move.
It looks, okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Holstich and a second by Mayor Protam Bernstein, and I'm not sure if our...
Yeah, I think I recorded it already, and I'll call a roll for that one, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Holstich?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Bernstein?
Yes.
Councilmember DeHart?
Yes.
Councilmember Middleton?
Hi.
Mayor Garner?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you very much. All right, the next item is Item 2A, a public hearing for a request by Celine Palm Springs LLC for an amendment to the previously approved final development plans and tentative tract map for the Dream Hotel to include the addition of 24 condominium units to the southeast section of the site, reconfiguration of the 12 condominium units at the northwest area of the site, and an increase in the number of tower condominium units from 28 to 29 units, and modifications to the final landscape plans for the development located at the northwest corner of Avenida Caballeros and Amado Road, and consideration of a settlement and development agreement to facilitate the completion of the project. It's a mouthful, but first, City Attorney Ballinger.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. This item I'm going to have to recuse from because I have property across the street from it. So in my place, Elizabeth Hall, one of the partners at Best Besson Krieger, is going to be appearing here by Zoom to help you with any legal issues, so thank you.
Fantastic, thank you. And just to confirm, Elizabeth, are you here with us already? We just want to make sure you're here, Elizabeth.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. May we have a staff report, please, from our planning director?
Yes, good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protam, and members of council. This item is a request by Celine Palm Springs to amend prior approved plans for the Dream Hotel, which was first approved in 2007 and was last seen by the City Council in 2019. I'm going to focus on the planning changes that are being requested tonight. There will be a presentation following this by the Deputy City Manager and Attorney Elizabeth Hall to talk through the accompanying agreement. So we'll kind of pause, take questions, and then go into that. That will include details about the agreement and, of course, the accompanying construction schedule. But for my piece, the land use actions requested will amend the prior approvals, as I mentioned, to allow additional condominium units and to reconfigure the site plan, and I'll get into the details of these changes in just a moment. The project as amended includes a 156-room hotel as well as 65 condominium units at a site that is located in Section 14, just north of the convention center. It is bound by Amado Road to the south, Calle Alvarado to the west, and Avenida Caballeros to the east. Just to recap the evolution of this project, as I mentioned, it has a bit of a history. It's been before council on several different occasions, so I'm just including some of the highlights here. It was originally approved in 2007, as I mentioned, for a 200-room hotel with 143 residential units. The project has been amended several times over the years, most recently in 2019 when amendments were granted by the council to facilitate a 156-room hotel as well as 40 residential units. The 2019 amendment also included a farmhouse, restaurant, and event space at the southeast corner of the site. Through these amendments, the footprint and height of the hotel itself has largely stayed the same, while the location and heights of the other residential units and associated spaces has really shifted and changed throughout the site. The amendment before you tonight would primarily accomplish three things. The first is that the farmhouse and event space at the southeast corner of the site will be eliminated and replaced with 24 condominium units, which we call the South Villas. Second, the 12 units in the northwest portion of the site, the North Villas, will be reconfigured into two condominium buildings. Previously, they were in several other buildings, and we'll look at plans in a second. And lastly, one additional unit will be provided in the residential tower. There'll be no change to the overall footprint or height of that building, it's internal reconfiguration to add one additional height, bringing that from 28 to 29 units. The hotel would remain unchanged at 156 rooms, as it was approved in 2019, and there will be other changes to the land... be other changes to the landscaping details that are necessary to implement the overall site plan changes we're talking about tonight. This will all be, if it's approved tonight, it will all be forwarded to the Architectural Review Committee, who will review all of those details. Overall, this will increase the number of residential units from 40 to 65, necessitating the addition of 38 parking spaces, which have been accommodated on the site plan before you. The applicant has indicated that event spaces have been reallocated within the hotel building based on their current needs. The height of the North and South Villas would be increased from the 2019 approval from 26 feet to 46 feet for the North Villas, and from 24 feet to 38 feet for the South Villas, and I'm going to show this all visually in a minute. And here we go. So I know there has been a lot of discussion around height, so I just wanted to spend a bit of time here walking through it and trying to clarify some of the project history here. First, I think it's important to point out some of the policy context, and that the Section 14 specific plan within which the site is located does allow height of up to 100 feet on the site, so that the building heights approved for this project have consistently remained what is permitted within the Section 14 specific plan. The initial approval in 2007, shown sort of to the left of this chart, allowed for heights ranging from 42 to 64 feet. As you can see in this chart, the heights have varied over the years as we go progressively towards the right, which is getting us closer to current time. However, they have generally remained between the 24 and 64 feet that have been approved over the years. They are now capping out at 56 feet in this current iteration, at the tallest location, which is the residential tower adjacent to the hotel, which is not being changed from the last approval. The current amendment would increase the height of both the North and South Villas beyond what was approved in 2019, but again, remaining below the height of the hotel and residential towers that were previously approved, and within the height permitted by the specific plan. I also want to note that in their decision, the Planning Commission required that the North and South Villa buildings be reduced in height by six feet beyond what was originally requested and submitted by the applicant. So the heights came down a little bit. You can see the two right columns. The gray column to the right was the original submission, and the highlighted yellow column is what was ultimately approved by the Planning Commission, or recommended for approval by the Planning Commission. I do also want to note, just, you know, in your, in your report, just some discrepancies, and this relates a little bit to how the parking structures are being related, so there's a lot of talk about the number of stories, and it gets a little bit confusing. I do just want to be clear that although the heights of the buildings came down six feet, the overall number of habitable residential floors remain the same from what was submitted in 2022 and what the Planning Commission approved. So it was four stories of residential building in the northeast, the North Villas, and three stories in the southeast, and that remains the same. The buildings have just come down in height by six feet. All right, to give some visual context, finally, the image, this image shows the 2013 approved plan, where you can see that there were 28-foot-tall villas on the top-left part of the site, which is the northwest, and on the right or south corner, you can see the 50-foot-tall residential building that had been approved back then. You can also see that the Morrison Development across Avenida Caballeros has not yet been constructed at the time that the 2013 amendments were occurring. And here, we're showing a comparison between the 2019 approved site plan and what is before you tonight. We can see, if you look at the image on the right, the five-story, three, sorry, there were five three-story residential buildings approved in 2019, called the North Villas, have been consolidated into two main buildings of four stories. And so the red underneath is showing the 2019 approval, and then the current proposal is kind of overlaid over that, just to kind of give you some comparison of the layout of the buildings and how that's changed. And then you can also see in the bottom right, the same thing for the South Villas. So that the red image there was the event house and, the farmhouse and event space that was two stories, 24 feet, being replaced by those three-story condominiums for 24 units. All right, the applicant has also prepared and shared schematics that compare the height and setback of the previous plan with the revised proposal. On this slide, you can see the elevation of the North Villas as proposed today. Again, we have the red massing behind it to show you what was approved in 2019, superimposed with what is before you tonight. The buildings have been designed by the applicant to step back in height as they go up, so as to help increase the setback from the adjacent Center Court community. Similarly, we have a similar image here for the South Villa, so you can see in red the original two-story height of the farmhouse and event space being replaced by these three-story condominium buildings, and again, showing how the buildings attempt to step back to provide a little more setback from the adjacent development. In their decision, the Planning Commission also required additional landscaping to provide a buffer along the perimeter of the property line adjacent to Center Court. These images show their view from the property line towards the west with the proposed buildings and landscape screening. So on the top image, you know, it's not showing any of the development that's being proposed, but it's very faint, you can see sort of a red line of what the landscape buffer will, as required by the Planning Commission, will do to sort of provide some additional screening. In the bottom image, they've also rendered in the proposed buildings to sort of give some context. And we have a similar image here for the South Villa. So this is a view looking south from Center Court, again, showing sort of, you know, the top image where the landscape buffer would be provided, and then in the bottom image showing it with the buildings behind. And finally, just to provide some additional visual context, just some renderings of what the proposed buildings would look like. So this is the North Villas, as they are proposed today, again, rising up to four stories, with the parking sort of being provided internally. And then this is an image of the South Villas. The Planning Commission conducted two hearings on this last fall, so the first, at its first meeting on September 14th, they had a discussion that primarily centered around the height and the landscaping, as well as the impact to adjacent Center Court, and they asked that the applicant go back and reconsider the heights and setbacks of the buildings, as well as the landscaping that I had mentioned. It returned to the Planning Commission on September 28th with revised plans, where the heights had come down to six feet that I had mentioned, as well as some of the images showing the landscape buffering that were in the previous images, and that was what was recommended for approval by the Planning Commission. And so that is what is before you tonight, their recommendation. So to conclude, staff are recommending approval with the conditions included in your packages, reflecting the changes that were made by the Planning Commission. If approved, as I mentioned, this will go to the Architectural Review Committee for the review, and that concludes my presentation. I'm available for questions, along with the project manager, who is here, and the applicant is also in the audience, and then, of course, we'll move on to the rest of the presentation when you're ready. Thank you.
Fantastic, thank you. Do we have any questions for staff? Mayor Protem?
I just, a question, just to, you said very quickly how the setbacks have changed. Could you?
Let's go, can we go back to the presentation, Todd? Thank you. They didn't, from what, so I think this image kind of shows the North Villas well. So you can see here in red the 2019 approval, and so I, at the ground level, they are maintaining the same setback that was approved in 2019. What they have done is tried to step back the buildings in some locations to give additional setback to the property line than what was proposed in the former iteration in 2019. So trying to provide a little more distance, and again, this red line is trying to show sort of a, you know, a visual plane here, trying to sort of respect that visual plane and ensure, you know, to minimize the impact on the adjacent Center Court.
Okay, that was helpful. Yeah, I was trying to understand that, so. And so this has always been zoned for these, those heights since Center Court was built, is that correct?
I might call Edward up. I'm not sure, going back that far. Edward, who's been on this case for many, many years, probably recalls.
Good evening, Mayor, and Mayor Protem. My name is Edward Robertson. I am the project manager and principal planner with the City of Palm Springs. And to answer your question, that is true, the zoning has remained consistent, it's the same zoning since the time it was first approved by council.
My question was since Center Court was built?
That's correct. It's been the same zoning designation.
Okay, so it hasn't changed over time at all? Okay, and my other question, just which is aside, is when we do these new buildings, their environmental imprint on the, what is, are these totally green, are LED certified? Could you?
So when the council first approved the project way back in 2007, a mitigated negative declaration was certified. That doesn't expire, but in addition to that, there was an addendum to that in 2013, because there hasn't been any significant changes to the project itself or new information that was not analyzed the very first time, so the same environmental document still controls.
And in addition to the sequent impacts, I think you were also asking about the design of the buildings and whether that's being done in a sustainable fashion. We don't have any detailed information on that, but I think the applicant could probably speak to that.
Okay, all right, thank you. Those are my questions for now.
Councilmember Hostage?
Thank you, thank you, Madam Mayor. I just have a follow-up. So on that slide that you're showing right there, so the original, you said the building has stepped back. The red is the new design, correct?
No, no, sorry, I know it's a little confusing. The red is the old, and the black over top of it is the current, the design that's before you tonight.
Got it. So the red actually had some overhangs, the former design had some overhangs, but this actually has both, but it is set back further than the original building, correct?
Correct, that's a clearer way to say it, that they have set back the second and third stories beyond what was approved in 2019, to provide additional setback.
Thank, thank you.
Councilmember DeHart?
So Chris, I need, I don't see that. So the plan shows the 2019 approval set back from the street, considerable distance from the black lines now on the northeast corner where the North Villas are.
Sorry, you're talking about the upper-left corner?
Yeah.
The plan view shows, well, I think you're seeing the ground floor plan there. So there are portions of the building that certainly extend further, closer to the property line than they did previously in 2019, but if you go down to the elevation view, the buildings start to set back where buildings had previously been proposed to provide additional distance in some locations. But you are right, there are portions of this area that will become closer to Center Court than had been approved in 2019.
And what's the height of?
The overall height of this particular area is, one second.
Well, next to Center Court. So what's the height of that building that's closest to Center Court on the northeast corner?
It raises in total height to 46.2 feet.
And that's a huge difference from the original plan of, what, 26, under 26?
Well, and I think, again, if we go here, this is where it gets a little messy. In the original plan, it was 42 feet. So originally, in 2007, we had approved a building of 42 feet in height at this location. It's changed over the years, but you're right, in 2019, it was 26 feet, two stories.
But I think, weren't the, the 42-foot, I think, from the original, seemed like it was more compatible with the neighborhood because there was row, there was row, you had rows, and it seemed like it didn't intrude as much as this, this, this design is going to be on that, just that corner piece, it's just that corner section that, that I think I've got concern on.
Councilmember, just, we're getting kind of into comments on this. We want to try to stick to questions until we open, finish the public hearing.
To, I guess, to answer your question, I, you know, I think, we're not comparing apples to apples, I think you're correct, but I, you know, we're trying to show the story of how this has evolved, and certainly it's your decision on how you want to proceed.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Hostage?
Thank you. So going back to that chart that Councilmember DeHart was asking about the height, so it went from 26 feet in 2019 to 52 feet as submitted, and then 46 as approved by Planning Commission. I'm not a builder, so it's 26 feet, two stories, and then 46 would be four stories, is that right?
Correct. It's typically 10 feet a story, however, they're providing, you know, higher ceiling heights.
10 or 12, right. So that's a significant difference for the neighbors there. Is that what some of the neighborhood complaints have been about?
That's right. I think that their complaints, and I think this is, you know, and a lot of the comments that were sent to the council earlier this week, are really focused on those North Villas and the change that that additional height will have in that location.
Thank you. Councilmember Middleton?
Thank you. And Chris, thank you for the report. My questions are probably more directed at the City Attorney, but I'm looking at Page 10 and Page 11 of the staff report, and before I ask these questions, I hope this project does get completed, but I am going to ask these questions, given the fact that this first came to us in 2007, and some degree of skepticism regarding whether or not this will be actually completed, I think is warranted. So at the bottom of Page 10, one of the terms is that the city maintains the right to repurchase the property if the developer is found to be in default of the SDA. Does the developer agree that the city has that right to repurchase the property?
So we'll defer that question to Ms. Hall, if we could bring her on to the presentation. Thank you.
Sure. Can you guys hear me and see me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. So yes, you know, whether or not they will agree that they're in default is another issue, but if the, take a look at the agreement, it's Section 310.1, has the language regarding the city's option to repurchase, and in that case, if construction is delayed or they don't maintain the schedule, that provision provides that the city has to give them notice, there's a cure period, and the city has six months from triggering this event to exercise the option to purchase. And then at that point, the city will either pay the amount that the developer paid for the property, plus the cost to develop incurred by the developer to date, or the fair market value is determined by an appraiser.
And on Page 11, we start with a series of milestones, beginning in August of 2023, with the commencement of site grading and civil construction, and concluding in December of 2026 with completion of the North Villas, the hotel, and the South Villas. Let's just start right at the very beginning, in August of 23, which is only a few months away. What happens if site grading and civil construction does not begin by August 31 of 2023?
So if they miss a milestone, in the agreement, there's, it would be a default. The city would then give them written notice that they've missed a milestone in the schedule. Developer has 30 days to cure or commence to diligently pursue a cure, so if it's not something that can be done in 30 days, they, they have the reasonable amount of time to do it. If they don't cure the default, well, if they do cure, then there's no default, and the agreement continues. If they don't cure, then the city would, then pursue its remedies, which could include retaking the property.
All right. And are there provisions to cover if the city believes that a, something has not been cured, but the developer believes it has been cured? What happens, how do we resolve those disputes?
We would end up litigating.
All right, thank you.
Madam Mayor, if I might, we will be doing a separate presentation on the settlement and development agreement, as well as the timeline later on. What I thought might be helpful is if you discuss the changes to the site plan first, take public comment on both the site plan and the agreement, and then after you conclude your discussions about the changes to the site plan, we can go into the agreement. But if you'd like to take them both at the same time, again, we're happy to do that as well, but just thought it might be easier to divide our discussion into two parts.
I think there's a question for the City Attorney as well, if, can we hear that portion after we have opened and closed the public hearing? Or do we need to hear all of these before we close the public hearing?
So we would do both staff reports first, and then take public comment, because you, or you can, you can recess your public hearing and then have the second staff report, and then reopen it, and take more public comment. It really depends on whether or not you want to do two rounds of public comment or just one.
We'll do one round. And can we have the second staff report, then?
I will turn it over.
Thank you.
So with that, Ms. Hall, if you want to talk about the settlement and development agreement, and then following your comments, I'll go into the specific timeline, as there were questions relative to the graph that was presented showing the specific dates of the timeline.
Sure. So as the- So as the council's aware, this has been an ongoing project. You've had an agreement since 2013. We got to a point, there's been 11 amendments to this agreement. That last amendment came to council in January of 2020. So amendment number 10 had given the developer until February 1, 2020, to commence continuous construction of the core and shell of the hotel project. They were also supposed to have submitted proof of financing by that February 1, 2020 date. They came to the city, we issued a notice of anticipatory default in January, they came back to the city in January of 2020 and asked for 90 days to provide a new milestone schedule and to, you know, give us an idea of their financing and, and those sorts of issues. The city agreed to that in amendment number 11 to the original purchase and sale agreement. That, excuse me, that amendment was for a 90-day period. COVID shutdown happened in, in March of 2020, so shortly into this period. On April 2 of 2020, the city agreed with the developer that COVID was a force majeure event that was inhibiting or prohibiting them from proceeding with the, the project at that time. The city had declared an emergency on March 14th, so using that date as the day that the force majeure event occurred, the city agreed that there were 49 days remaining on the 90 days. And once the force majeure event ended, the developer would have 90 days, or I'm sorry, 49 days remaining to complete the milestone schedule and, and come into compliance with the agreement. On August 12 of 2021, the city informed the developer that the city had determined the force majeure event had ended and they had 49 days to commence construction or provide a new schedule. The developer disagreed with that. Instead of proceeding to litigation at that point, the council directed us to work on a new understanding with the developer, and so that's what we've done. And what is before you this evening? It is a settlement and development agreement, and it ends the previous agreement that had the 11 amendments and sort of sets the table anew. Included in here is a waiver of all claims against either party. They were both waiving our claims related to the old agreement and the old interactions, and that sets out a new development schedule and then some of the financing and other things that Councilmember Holstet had asked about. So that's really what's before you this evening. We can go into more details on the agreement if you want, but basically it just sets out that we waive all, all our claims against each other and then sets forth a new development schedule, and then it sets forth new limitations or, or steps if that schedule isn't followed.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from council regarding the agreement? Okay. What was that?
Specifics on the agreement?
Yes, if you have staff questions for staff about the agreement.
I have some questions on the agreement. I wanted to go into the unavoidable delays, which is on page 125. There are certain things, inability to obtain labor or materials, inability to obtain government permits or approvals. Now, with the government, that just mean, provided that they've made, the inability to obtain government permits or approvals, that is due to the government or fault, not theirs. Is that correct?
That's correct. So if they haven't, if they show up at City Hall and they need a permit and we can't issue it because City Hall was burned down, that's a force majeure event. If they show up at City Hall and they need a permit, but they only have half the stuff, that's not going to be a force majeure event. So they need to have done everything within their power to get the permit and if we, or if they need one from the water district or, you know, some flood control district, whomever, if they need some approval from a governmental agency and that governmental agency is incapable of issuing it, then the force majeure event would take place. But they have to have done their part.
Okay, thank you. And the, the interruptions to financial markets and economic conditions, just to clarify, that, that doesn't mean if they can't get financing or there is suddenly increase in interest rates, none of that counts?
No. It's more, there's a total world meltdown of the market and there's no money being lented because of circumstances beyond their control.
Okay. And then the question about inability to obtain labor or materials.
Again, it's not, it's an inability, right? So it's not labor's expensive, it's not, you know, they have to get labor from far away, it's, there's physically no labor or materials. So, for example, one of the examples they have given is if they need a particular microchip to run the elevators, and those just aren't available because there's a war in wherever they're being done. It's completely unavailable, unavailable, then that might qualify as a force majeure event. But just because the price went up, that's not going to get it.
Okay. And this is, this is pretty standard, this terminology here?
It is.
This is tight, okay, and there's no way to make it any tighter?
Certainly happy to consider anything.
I'm just wondering, I'm not a lawyer, so I don't, I don't know, so I'm asking.
It's pretty much industry standard, there's case law around a lot of these provisions, so if we do get into a dispute, we have precedent to look to. But yeah.
Okay.
It's, it's a standard force majeure event.
Okay. And then on page 127, which is sort of, and 128, where we talk about maintenance of the property and graffiti. The one question I had is because you have pretty strict, you know, they have to do things within five days and, and all of that, but it does seem that there might, if there was a, are they obligated to be checking the site themselves or does this rely upon the city saying, hey, you've got graffiti?
So there is a general obligation here for them to maintain the site. So yes, they need to be checking it, but if there is graffiti or something on the site that's not acceptable and we're aware of it, we braze it with them, then the five days kicks in to resolve it. But yes, should be actively monitoring the site.
Okay. And then there's a question about the security, which is mainly, there's no actual onsite security, but there's cameras and you have to answer the phone within 24 hours, is that right?
That's correct.
So is there, is there any way to just have them check it once in a while, while, and before they commence construction?
So we did discuss with them having onsite security 24 hours a day, and they indicated that was cost prohibitive and not industry standard. They might be amenable or you might be able to discuss with them when they come up to give their part of the presentation, what is reasonable security for the site.
Yeah, I wasn't saying 24/7, just saying occasionally.
We could, you could ask them to use a security company that drives by periodically and is on call in case of an event.
Okay. Those are my questions. Thank you.
Do we have any other? Councilmember Holstich.
Thank you. I have a follow-up, if I can, about that section, unavoidable delays, 3.3.9 on page 125. Thank you to Mayor Protem for excellent lawyering. I thought I knew about force majeure until, from law school, until we were governing during a pandemic and we saw a lot of projects. So can you explain more inability to obtain labor or materials? So I know we have a number of city projects where we do have the inability to obtain a material for six months or longer because of existing disruptions in the supply chain. So with those sorts of things, which actually are just now sort of common practice as you do development, would that fall under this section as a force majeure or are those expected and understood as to be a general part of the industry right now?
So there is a representation in here that both parties are making that we agree that there is no force majeure event as of today or when this is approved. So it would have to be some new circumstance that's arisen since this agreement was executed that creates an inability to get the material that they're after.
I'll think more about that because I'm concerned that starting tomorrow, if this is approved and there's an inability to obtain any materials for six to months to a year, like there would be for any city project, that then, are you saying you're, you're not sure if this would go into effect then?
So if they go to order something tomorrow, they need a computer chip and it is not available, it's not just hard to get, but it is completely unavailable, that, that may rise to a level of a force majeure event. We could add in a condition that requires them to pre-procur anything that as of 30 days from today, they have a concern about. It's not something I've discussed with them, but that would address the issue that you're raising.
Thank you.
So if there's a concern that microchips for the dishwashers aren't going to be available, then we could add a requirement or, or discuss with them a requirement to have a pre-procurement process, so they start that process sooner and get into the queue for that difficult to achieve material.
Thank you. I'd like to have that conversation. And then it says pandemics, and so we're agreeing, we are still in a global pandemic of COVID. We're agreeing that COVID-19 doesn't apply to this force majeure unavoidable delays, correct?
Correct. So right now, we're saying that there is no force majeure event. The state of emergency in the city has ended, the state of emergency in the state has ended, the federal government has ended the state of emergency, and the World Health Organization declared this week that the pandemic is, is either over or coming to an end within the next few weeks.
Thank you. Any additional questions for staff? All right, seeing none, I'll turn it over to Flynn.
If I could have the second PowerPoint on the screen, please. What I'd like to do is just go briefly through the major milestones of the project and talk a little bit in terms of the timing and completion of the hotel project. And we're still waiting for the PowerPoint to come up. As you're aware, you do have a visual of the timeline of the PowerPoint, I'm sorry, of the schedule in your packets. A little bit difficult to read, as I've heard from a number of the city council members and members of the public as well, and so that's why I want to go through that verbally with you this evening. I will tell you that the original PDF of the timeline is legible as long as you blow it up in your Adobe Reader. In terms of the timeline, there are actually four major construction phases as part of the project. The first part of that is relative to the site work, which includes the site grading and the civil improvements to the site. The second phase is decor and shell of the hotel building. The third phase is relative to the villas and the fourth phase is, I'm sorry, the hotel and the fourth phase is the villas. In terms of the site work, the timeline that's given and the milestones that are presented there actually started back in April, and I will tell you that the applicant did submit their site grading plan to us back in April. We've had meetings with staff to review that, to identify if there's any incomplete elements, and I believe we're ready to issue that if we haven't already. And so that is already in process. There is a second permit or permits that are required relative to the civil improvements, which include the utilities on the site, reviewing the hydrology plan and other associated site improvements, as well as the off-site improvements. Per the schedule, they would be required to submit the permits for those, that second phase of civil improvements in October of this year, and then those permits would be issued in November. In terms of the construction start that I've identified there in August of 23, that would be the start of the grading work. They would start the civil improvements in November this year after they secure those permits, with all of these in this phase to be completed by September of 2024. Moving on to the next phase, this is the hotel tower and its associated condo tower. They have a timeline here of March of 2023 to December of 2026, and that's the full timeline from permitting to completion of construction. They've already begun work on updating their core and shell drawings for the hotel building. As you're aware, they already have the foundation of the whole hotel building in place. However, because of minor changes to that, they are required to update those drawings. What is intended is that the core and shell permit will be submitted in October of this year and then the remainder of the building, which means finishing the exterior as well as the interior improvements of the hotel building. The permits for that would then be submitted in March of 2024. They would then begin construction on the core and shell in September of '24 and February of '25 for the exterior and interior improvements, with the entire building completed by December of 2026. The next phase is the north villas, phase three of that. The timeline that they're giving you there is from August of 2023 to December of 2026. Permit submittal for that is in July of 2024, approval by December. One of the things that is also accounted for in this schedule is they do need to go through architectural review as part of that process for both the north and south villas, so that is accounted in this schedule. The construction on the north villas would start in December of '24 and then finish in December of '26. And then finally, the south villas, again, on much the same schedule, slight delay in terms of the permit, submittal and approval and construction start on that, but it would still be finished by December of 2026. One of the things that I didn't talk about yet is, this is one of the elements that's included as part of the agreement, is that they have to have proof of financing for three distinct phases of this development. The first is relative to their site work. They must show proof of financing for that initial phase to us as part of the permit issuance process. The next phase, which is the core and shell of the hotel building, they must submit proof of financing for that as part of the permitting process there. And then for the final phase, which includes the north and south villas and the interior and facade improvements to the hotel, they would then, at that stage, need to present proof of financing to city staff at that phase. So not only do you have milestones for submitting permits, obtaining permits, beginning construction and finishing construction, you also have three financing milestones that are part of this timeline and schedule, and that is part of the agreement that you have before you this evening. With that, that concludes my portion of the presentation on the timeline, and Mayor will go ahead and take any additional questions you might have.
Thank you very much. Does council have any questions on this portion that was just presented? Mayor Protem.
Just a question on the financing is, and I don't know, again, I'm not a lawyer or this, how, how are there different types of, like, strong financing letters or is there a, how do we make sure that, that when each section, that we, when they have the financing, that it's actually going to get completed?
This is one of the discussions that we had internally with the developers' team, and I'll turn it over to Ms. Hall, who will give you the results of what we landed on in terms of how we ascertain financing.
Sure. So there are provisions in the agreement that require them to provide us with quote-unquote "proof of financing." So they need to provide us, provide us with the letter of intent with whoever their lender would be. The city will then, either through its staff or a fiscal consultant, review those documents and confirm that it's a reputable lender, that it's on commercially reasonable terms, and that it's sufficient financing to complete that phase of the project. And so we're going to actually bring in Kaiser Marston or one of the fiscal consultants who review these types of projects and pro formas on a regular basis to ensure that it is sort of consistent with industry standards and will be sufficient to establish enough financing to complete that phase of the project. Really, the goal is to ensure that we don't end up with some portion half-built and that it keeps moving forward. So they're going to have to demonstrate to the city's satisfaction that they have enough funding to complete each portion and that it's commercially reasonable.
Okay. That, that was my question and my goal is to make sure it's, finishes, each section finishes. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions from council? We're seeing none. Staff, are we complete with the reports?
Yes, Madam Mayor, we are.
Okay. Thank you. So at this time, I'd like to open the public hearing. The public is invited to speak on this public hearing for up to two minutes. The-
The first speaker is Don Burkett.
Let's see. Madam Mayor, we might want the applicant to give their presentation first as part of the public hearing?
Sure. If we can have the applicant do their presentation, that would be great. Apologies.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council, and staff. First, I just want to acknowledge what Councilmember Middleton said. We've been here a long time, and I know the frustrations that the city has had, and certainly I have had. I'm a neighbor to this project. I actually look out my backyard to the construction site. So I am as motivated as anybody to get this done. And unfortunately, through the course of the project, have had a multitude of issues. One, implosion of various brands, the selling of brands to less acceptable brands, the downturn of 2007, '08, '09, and now, of course, COVID and in between, right before COVID, the start of the construction of the garage, and a general contractor who unfortunately didn't pay his subcontractors, which put us into two years, which we've just finished last month, of litigation, trying to resolve all the liens and outstanding invoices that were on that project. So I just want to acknowledge that. And I appreciate your patience and your willingness to work with us, and I appreciate that the community has put up with not a very attractive site. We've tried to keep it clean. We do weed it regularly. We paint over graffiti. We've changed out the fencing. We do our best, but it's very, very much so that the community, and I'm not sure who has taken to writing us messages on the fence, which we're trying to deal with all the time. But that being said, I wanted to talk about three areas. One, what we've done through the ages to try to accommodate our neighbors. Two, what the setbacks are and some of the changes to the height. So first, since we've done this project, we originally started, this particular design was a single building, and due to some comments, we separated that into two buildings and created a view corridor through the two main buildings. We also set it back 170 feet, such that nobody had this imposing building sitting on top of them. We moved the project around such that the corner of the Center Court project was at the view corridor, so that the condos on either side had the access to that view corridor. We agreed to putting in a hedge along the entire perimeter of the site where Center Court is located between eight and 10 feet, which would help block sound, any visuals of the hotel, et cetera. And we did do a study where we went up to the height of the condominium building to ensure that we didn't see into the Center Court, where their landscape and their pool and their tennis courts are. And in fact, the funny thing is, the only backyard that gets disturbed is mine, which I think is kind of ironic. We designed all the drives such that the entrance and exit is off Alvarado, so that any traffic into the site, you know, guests coming in and leaving, disturbed as few residents on, at Center Court, and also put the traffic from the hotel onto a street that's less traveled, rather than Caballeros, such that the entrance off Caballeros is purely for back-of-house services. We replaced all of the windows and sliders at Center Court early on with double-pane sliders and windows to mitigate any sound disturbance that may have had. That is actually completed. We conditioned and enclosed our back-of-house, and we placed all of the activity levels, like restaurants and bars, on the west-facing facade, and ensured that what is ever on the east-facing facade was all quiet activity. So those are kind of the things we've tried to do. In addition, as a result of the Planning Commission meeting, we looked at the heights. We cannot give up unit count and square footage for sale. Right now, hotel financing is very, very difficult, and we are financing this as a residential project, which has a small hotel component, comparatively speaking, from a financing perspective. However, from the dollars perspective, the hotel, we actually received our first bid today from a G C, is $200-plus million, just over $200 million, of which $130 million of that is the hotel and the grounds, and the remainder is the condominiums. So you can see that the condominiums carry a huge load in reducing the debt on the hotel to a serviceable level. That's very important for us to be able to get this project done. But in regards to the, to the Planning Commission comments, we took the North condos down, four feet, 10 inches, actually, I heard six, but it's actually four feet, 10 inches, to 45 feet, 2 inches, by lowering the height of each of the condo units, the ceiling height. And the reason it is now four stories is it sits, to make it the kind of project that can garner the per-square-foot price selling, is my time over?
Your, your time is over, but if you want to finish your sentence, please.
Okay. We had to put parking there, so it raised it up. So I, I can come back with the comments, too.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you, we appreciate that. All right. The public hearing is open, so the first speaker is Don Burkett, followed by David Elliott. And the applicant will have two minutes after the speakers have finished.
Thank you, Mayor Garner and City Council. My name is Don Burkett. I am a homeowner here, and I'm also the Vice President of the Homeowners Association for Center Court. Very interesting process tonight, great questions, and I really thank you for those. Now, first of all, we would like to state that we are in favor of the Dream Hotel and its joint properties here. Before the 2019 plans were approved by City Council, City Councilperson Middleton visited our property to gain a better understanding of what was the impact of the hotel and the project would have on our HOA. You heard that this project's been on the books since 2007. Since then, our homeowners have endured 16 years of uncertainty and considerable changes to the design and what appears to be the financial viability of this project. Now, this here, which you've seen, is, it deals with both the northeast and southeast sections of the property. Two condominium developments called the North Villas and the South Villas, flanking either side of the Dream Hotel. Our next three speakers will focus on the City Council's approved 2019 plans, which are HOA generally favored. Please be aware that the Planning Commission's approval of the revisions, three yay, two nay, may have been different had the entire commission been present. Commissioner Roberts was eloquent in his opposition to the height of the proposed changes, what was not present on the last vote. At no point has a simple majority of four commissioners approved of this plan. All planning commissioners voted no regarding the overall height of both proposed sections on September 14th, 2022, which you heard. Now, three homeowners will share an analysis of the major issue at hand here. The northeast section is considerably higher than the currently approved buildings, to the point that our units along the property line will be suffocated if you approve the northeast section revisions. Thank you.
Next speaker is David Elliott, followed by Maureen Burl.
My name is David Elliott, as you've just heard. Oh, okay. I live at the Center Court condominiums. This diagram here shows Center Court. Yeah. Center Court, yeah, yeah, Center, okay, I can't look at that and student. The diagram shows Center Court in blue between Avanita Caballeros and Alvarado. We have four condo units facing the property line, all one-story, each at 13.8 feet high. I live in one of these units. On the left side, in tan, is the 2019 approved plan. Twelve condo units split among three two-story buildings and two three-story buildings. The building immediately in front of my condo is two stories high at 25.8 feet. Three-story buildings were to the west of Center Court at 37.9 feet. The placement and height of the buildings was respectful and within an appropriate scale with the existing property. On the right are the 2022 proposed changes. Still 12 condo units, but the reconfiguration is dramatically different. Most notable, two buildings instead of five, both at a height of 46.2 feet. These condos are four stories high facing my unit, just 51 feet from the property line. The count of 12 units approved in 2019, the count of 12 units approved in 2019 remains the same in the proposed revisions. The 2019 plan is appropriate in height, given the proximity to our property line and to our one-story condo units. As proposed, as proposed, the 2022 plan suffocates us. Thank you.
Next speaker is Maureen Burl, followed by Tom Bordeaux.
Good evening. My name is Maureen Burl, and I am a homeowner at the Center Court condominiums. My poster shows the height of each residential complex in the vicinity of the Dream Project. Each is placed in its relative proximity to the northeast section, labeled here as the North Villas. Note the height of 46.2 feet previously mentioned.
Maureen, we actually need you to use the mic because the public watching can't hear you.
Also note the relative placement to its closest neighbor, Center Court. From this illustration, it is obvious that the North Villa condos are only in scale with the commercial properties, the Dream Hotel and the Convention Center, not the residences close by. The southeast section, labeled as the South Villas, is within a reasonable scale. We understand the need to move the project forward with 24 condo units replacing the event space, but reconfiguring those 12 condos on the northeast section to suffer, to suffocate our residences should be as unacceptable to you as it is to us. Though we expect that the developer will have numerous reasons why the northeast section needs to be built as proposed currently, the 2019 approved plan for that section addresses our concerns and keeps the condo unit count at 12. As currently newly proposed, our units along the property line will be suffocated. Thank you.
Next speaker is Tom Boudreau, followed by Craig Withcomb.
Mayor Garner and City Council, my name is Thomas Boudreau, and I'm a homeowner at the Center Court condominiums. The drawing of the 2019 plan puts our concerns in pretty good perspective. Here you see the placement of five condo buildings that have been approved by City Council in 2019. Here are three one-story condos at Center Court. You will note that the condo building, and by the way, there are 12 condos completely in these five buildings, is two stories high. What you see is height appropriate, I mean, who builds one-story condos anymore? Nobody. But this, this is pretty darn good. The three-story condo building is completely in line with our guest parking and our driveway, nothing more. It does not obscure anything. It is set far enough back. And so the drawing that you saw earlier that made it look like that three-story building is right up against the property line facing us is not. And this comes from the developer. I did not make this drawing, okay? Now, fade to black. This is what is proposed, and this is what you're voting on. Two buildings, each four stories high, 46.2 feet high, directly across from our one-story units. It's just too darn high. All the posters and all the statistics and numbers we've used have all been vetted. We've vetted them very carefully. This drawing was actually supplied by the developer, and I just rejiggered it, okay? So if there's any question about this, please vet what you hear. Please do not approve the northeast section and stick with 2019.
Thank you. Craig Withcomb, followed by David Powell.
Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, my name is Craig Withcom. I also live at Center Court. And about two and a half years ago, my wife and I went to see the unit that we eventually bought, and we saw the, the empty lot with the mounds of dirt and the rusted re-bob and everything, very concerned about it. We went to City Hall, came here, went to the planning, and they showed us the 2019 plan. We decided to buy based upon that plan. We were, we're very happy about the hotel. That is not an issue. But the changes in the north side with the condos being that high is a very big issue to us now. You know, one of the things I've noticed tonight is, it appears that the developer has been given a lot of leeway for a long time, the can kicked down the road. And, you know, we're looking for the same type of emphasis put on the residents as well. Obviously, the developer has gotten a lot of leeway. One of the things I heard earlier, too, was talk about cameras on the site. I personally have never seen cameras, you know. I took this photo today, the homeless living on the site. So if there's cameras there, certainly no one's monitoring them or checking them at all. So I ask you to vote no on this project. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is David, David Powell, followed by David Thielins. David Thielins, thank you.
Thank you. You'll be glad to know I have no things up here. Honorable Mayor, City Council, I'm David Powell, an owner at Center Court. Once again, 10 years ago, from starting 10 years ago, return to you regarding the Dream Hotel. I wish before tonight you could have walked our property, where you would learn our homeowner's visual perspective and not those of drawings or hearsay. It's also unfortunate that the staff presentation appears to be skewed to favor the developer and not bring in multiple facts and concerns that have been raised prior. Specifically, the piece, the Planning Commission asked for larger height reductions, but a 3-2 vote approved only six feet. Also, staff continues to compare the original, to the original 2007. That was the original entitlement that the developer was provided and had the whole footprint. The project in 2013 started only as a hotel with short-term meeting bungalows to support the Convention Center. Then it evolved to include high-priced condos and one entire wing and less hotel rooms. Now, to apparently make the project financially viable to the developer, there needs to be more amassing of condos on the northern section of the property and additional development of unsightly and tall condominiums built starting at the corner of Ramado and Caballeros. Amassing of these condos not only, is not only at a place for the neighborhood, but will obstruct the views from at least a quarter of our complex. And Section 14 specific plan mentions the importance of view corridors, saying retaining these views of mountains will help to enhance the quality of the environment and experience of Section 14. Of course, the new condos and the hotel guests will have the delightful views of the mountains that the residents of Center Court will lose. I still can't get over the fact that for a project that has had numerous iterations, there's been no formal E I R done on this project, but uses the same neg deck for the last 16 years that has inconsistencies. There are much greater traffic, sound, and visual impacts than what it states in that of the apparently 2017 update. We continue to go through these project iterations with little enhancements to benefit the residents of a complex that's been in place since 1978. Finally, we know that additional housing is needed, but is it in the form of 24, potentially $1.5 million or more condos? That is not the intent of the thoughtful future housing plan to be implemented by the city. Please take the project back to the approved 2019 plan, which although not perfect, was at least an apparent compromise to move forward. And let's get it done. Thank you.
Thank you. David Thielins.
Hi, my name is David Thielins, and I'm a resident at the Seoul Community across Caballeros.
My name is David Thielenz, and I'm a resident at the Soul Community across Caballeros from the site, and I'm here to give full support for this project. I'm sorry for those who bought across from an empty lot. I do not believe views are guaranteed in Palm Springs. I know that from personal experience. And the fact that they have a building looming over them, I'm sorry, it's tough luck. I want you to weigh the number of jobs, the tax benefits, and getting rid of an eyesore. I'm tired of looking at a weed store on site. The sidewalk on the north side of Amato has been closed ever since I've lived here for the past four years. There are so many benefits to this that a handful of people should not be allowed to stop what will be a benefit to the community, to the, to the tax base, and to employment. This, we need jobs. We need the kind of jobs that hotels provide. They're not skilled jobs. They are lower-income jobs. So I'm sorry for Center Court. They feel impacted. I'm surprised at the amount of work the developer has done in replacing their windows and sliders, and still, they are not happy. Development happens. You buy across from an empty lot. If you wanted to determine what was going to be built there, you should have bought the lot yourself. I want you to give serious thought to approving this project as proposed. Thank you.
Thank you very much. There are no additional speakers. At this time, the applicant has two-minute rebuttal.
So a couple of things. Looking at their graphs, it's very hard to see the architecture from blocks that say that they are looming buildings. I want to say that, in fact, the buildings are designed to set back such that the heights that, at the maximum, are towards the center of the project if you really look at the architecture. The other thing is to say that, in fact, from the two single-story condominiums at Center Court, even a two-story building at the setback that we had originally would block their views. So we're not, we're not imposing a giant wall on top of Center Court. We have tried to be thoughtful about it. The first floor of the North Villas at the, from Center Court apartment to our building is 70 feet. That's like almost a third, I think, of a football field. It's not an insignificant amount. I think a football field is 300 feet. On the South Villas, it's 100 feet from the Center Court apartments or condos to our first floor of our condo, which is only two feet high, which is the top of a sunken garage. And again, the buildings step back. We've tried in the creation of them to create garden spaces and visual quarters. Second of all, in regards to the MND, the MND and the environmental work, when it was done back in, I don't remember the year, it already anticipated our project, Soul being built, Morrison being built, and the Convention Center. So it's not modified, or the amount of traffic is not changing. Our original project, when that was done, included 150 condos and a much larger hotel, I think, that they covered in the beginning. So we, we are always thinking about Center Court, but we cannot not build something because four units lose their view. And we have tried to be thoughtful about it to ensure that the patios and things, we are even including that we garden them so that they look beautiful. Thank you.
Thank you. The public hearing is now closed. So at this time, we'll take any discussion or additional questions from council. Do we have anyone that would like to start? Councilmember Middleton.
I have a question for Ms. Kibbe. Thank you. All, all the debate we're hearing this evening is really about the northeast condos, and I want to make sure I've got my facts correct. In the 2019 plan, that was 12 condo units?
Yes.
And it's still 12 condo units, but it's a reconfigured plan. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Are the new condo units substantially larger, or what is the economic, what's the economic outcome you're trying to achieve by these changes?
Sure. So the five buildings that were there before did not have parking. They had to park under the hotel and walk from the hotel, underground parking, up to their units. To be able to get the right price for those, we had to include parking, so we're putting them on podium. That's the primary difference. The number of units and size hasn't changed much. It's just now sitting on a, on a parking podium that has both guest parking and parking for all the units.
Was there any other alternative to how you would put parking?
There's nowhere, when you look at the constraints of the site, to put it other than underneath the units.
So, all right. And the economic, the actual square footages of the units are approximately the same?
Approximately the same, yes.
All right. Thank you.
Other comments or questions from council? Councilmember Holstidge?
Thank you. I have a question for the city attorney. We've required bonding or personal guarantees for other projects to ensure that they go forward. So can you just talk a little bit about discussions with the developers about that? I know our public has asked a long time for bonding or guarantees to ensure financing. So I know you've taken some steps that you discussed about financing requirements, but could you talk a little bit about that, please?
Sure. So we did raise that. The developer was resistant to including a bonding requirement. Their position was that the letter of intent and the financing provisions that we put in were sufficient to address their, to address the city's concerns, and that at this point they have a fairly large sum of funds invested in the project, and will be investing more over the, you know, next few years as they complete construction. And so there just wasn't a need in their mind for additional bonding.
And what's staff's position about the sufficiency of what we've seen to ensure there's financing to move forward with the project?
Are you asking me?
Probably not, since you're a city attorney and, but you've done the most discussions with the, no, you're great. I'm sure you have an answer, but I assume as an attorney, I would not have the answer for that. But you've had a number of discussions with the applicant. You are relaying what they've told you, and my question was if city staff has an analysis of what they've told you.
I apologize. I don't have an analysis other than built into the agreement, as I'd already discussed. We do have them requiring to provide proof of financing, which will then be analyzed by an outside consultant, as Ms. Hall has discussed.
And explain in detail what the proof of financing will be?
So in terms of the proof of financing, the applicant will be required to submit a letter identifying their lender, the terms, and then we will provide that to our independent consultant.
So then we'll have a consultant analyze if that's sufficient?
To see if it's sufficient and reasonable.
Thank you.
Other, Councilmember DeHart?
Yeah, Laurie, I got a follow-up question for you, please. On the, the 219 plan that seems to be embraced by a lot of people, why can't there be underground parking in the 219 plan?
Well, we could add it, but it would then have the same height concerns that they have.
So it, how, why can't parking go down further than it's, in the stated to go down in the 22 plan? Why can't the parking go, be lower in the ground?
Well, at some point, the cost gets so prohibitive. So the moment you start burying parking, the costs go up considerably. And we haven't analyzed that. We just put it on podium. It's already, if, the slope of the land is already, it's eight feet different from the north to the south, so we already have height changes in the, in this, even though it looks flat, there is an eight-foot difference.
On the North Villas?
Well, the height that we're having is always from the ground, but when you look at the whole site, leveling the whole site to make sure that it all fits.
The North Villas?
The North Villas.
Okay.
And we've already got an underground garage. I'm not even sure it's possible to dig another garage next to that. I'm not the construction person who could tell you that. But it would be cost prohibitive, or it would be highly costly, I should say.
But these are high-end condos.
They are.
So people would pay for that security and privacy and access?
So I will tell you that today, in the analysis, it's already costing over a million and a half dollars to build each unit, given today's costs. So you start adding in an underground garage, and you get to where you can no longer sell them.
Yeah, but what's our average medium income, median home price now?
Well, I don't think they're achieving 15 to 200, $2,000 a foot.
No, I think we're a million. Aren't we a million, two?
Yeah, but if you have a 3,000-foot condo that's costing a million and a half dollars to build, you have to sell it for, you know, do the math. We will have to sell it for at least $1,500 a foot to start to have any kind of return on them.
Yeah, yeah. And the setback on the current 22 plan, I guess we're not seeing a good enough illustration that really shows that setback you were talking about, the tier setback.
Yeah, so on the North Villas, for example, the fourth, the third floor, the heights, there is a drawing in the presentation that looks at each of the levels as to how far back they are. I don't have it. Is it possible to pull it up?
Yeah, I, I'm, I see that, but I find it, I still don't understand from the drawing. This one you're talking about? Oh.
Yeah, that one. I think there are others in the package. I'm just looking. With setbacks.
Yeah. It has each level, what the, what the setbacks are.
Mayor, I'm having a hard time hearing. Is someone online? If you can get a little closer to the microphone, please?
Yes, thank you. We can, I'll speak into the mic. And Todd, if you can pull up the presentation, the first presentation, page 11.
It's going to be in the sections.
So I'll go to that image while we look for the other drawing that's in the package. There are a lot of drawings in there, so we'll find that, but I can pull it up. The one that we had in the.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
It's right here.
So it's Site Plan 1, page 28 in your, in the plans of your package.
Okay. So it is this one. It is page 11.
Yes. And so it's, you can't see it in this presentation, but you can see the dimensions on the drawing on the bottom. So you can see this, you know.
Right here.
Right.
So, so if you look, if you look below, you'll see, you see 50 feet to sub-level parking.
Somebody won't see it. It's a larger version.
This, this is, happens to be the, this must be the south. This is the south condominiums, and the parking sticks up two feet above grade, and it's 50 feet to the property line to the sub-level parking. It's six, it's, I'm sorry, it's so small. 65 feet, three inches to the first and second floor, and it's 82 feet, three inches to the third floor. So you can see.
On the south?
On the south.
Yeah, but, you know, I think the entire project is, I think, is, is embraced by, universally, I think. I haven't, I don't hear complaints, and it's a beautiful project. So it, the hotel, the new, the south condominiums, you know, the grounds, everything, everything is fabulous. The only challenge that, that I keep hearing is, is the, the northeast corner specifically of the, 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 the new villa condos. So I'm wondering, could, could that northeast corner not be built at the 2019 height and increase your height on the inside of the other units? Couldn't you gain height on the other building versus having that 46-feet height right on the, the corner of, the northeast corner of that, the lot?
Right. So, so we're talking about, so looking at, on page 17, I think you have this full, this, the same document that I have, right?
Yeah.
Page 17.
Yeah.
Looking at, these are the north condos.
Yeah.
We're talking about these two condominiums that are affected, because the two lower condominiums are already looking at the hotel, correct? So the first floor level is 50 feet. The second level is 62 feet. You can see the step back for those two. I, I didn't do it all. There is a drawing here, let me see, down below where you can look at it all. So you can see how it steps back to the mechanical screen at the top. It's 110 feet. To the fourth floor, it's 76.6 feet at the highest levels. I mean, are you asking if we can go up higher on one building and lower on the other? I mean, from, I can't imagine from an architectural perspective that would be attractive.
Well, your hotel is, how high is the hotel?
Well, the, well, the hotel is 40, 50, 56 feet, yeah.
So I'm just wondering if there was another, if there's another option in this new design with these two building units, if the one unit on the west could be, you know, designed to accommodate your needs economically?
Well, it's not one unit in this, it's a one building.
Yeah, building.
With six units.
So could that building be more in scale, increasing in height, next to the hotel, which is significantly higher? And then look at, look at, you know, is, what is the cost of, if we haven't analyzed the cost of underground parking, then I'm not sure.
Well, I know what the cost of underground parking is, because I know what we put into the garage that's existing.
Yeah.
Which is well into the 15, 18 million dollars. So I know what it costs to, to put in a garage. We haven't looked at that from a costing perspective for this particular.
And that garage accommodates how many cars?
258, I believe.
And under these condos, you're trying to accommodate how many cars?
There are 24-plus for guest parking.
Underground, all, everything's, are partially underground.
Podium, yeah, podium. It's not, it's all above grade. None of it's partially, the south side is submerged eight feet, but the north is at grade.
Oh, gotcha. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Do we have other questions or comments from council? Councilmember Holstidge?
Hi. Thank you. I have a question for you, if I can, Ms. Kibbe. The event space, could you just talk a little bit about the need for the event space? And I understand you need condos for the financing of the hotel. Obviously, the city's interest in this is a Convention Center hotel and Convention Center amenities, so the city is less interested in condos, though we are interested in the project moving forward and being completed. So could you just talk a lit, a little bit about, I know that the event space and the event, talking to other hoteliers and the city, knowing events have changed and the needs for events have changed at hotels, but could you just speak a little bit about what we're losing if we're losing an event space? I saw that you're doing a pop-up event space or something different. So could you just talk a little bit about that and, you know, the need for condos over the event space?
Actually, we're not getting rid of event space. We're just changing where it's located. So on the first floor of our hotel, on the south end of the wing, we had a large co-working space, and we had boardrooms and some workrooms, and we had hotel rooms. Hotel rooms on the first floor are not highly desirable, so we're moving them to another location, where we're configuring the hotel rooms within the hotel, and then taking that space and making it our event space.
So is the event space for hotel guests and for hotel uses? Is there any sense of it connecting to the Convention Center for those uses?
Well, it's available for rent, obviously, for, for events of any kind, and of course, it would be available for anybody who wants to book it and utilize it that way.
Thank you. Thank you. Mayor Protem.
Could you say, how big is the event space?
Right now, I think it's planned to be 7,500 square feet before the pre-function and not including boardrooms and any breakout rooms.
Okay, thanks. And I have a question for Flynn. If somebody has an empty lot next to them, and I know that we had the plans then, would, would planning tell them what it could potentially be, or just say this is what the plan is?
Yes, planning could tell them what is planned for the site, wherever we have an approved site plan in place that hasn't been built yet. We're also happy to share, you know, if there's a vacant lot where there are no plans in place, what the zoning designation is.
And if somebody said, what is this, what is this approved plan, would planning tell them, or would you tell them that, yes, but it could change up to this amount, or if they asked?
Well, it's hard to know if it would change if you have an approved plan in place.
But you know what the zoning allows.
Yes, we do know what the zoning allows. We also have on the Planning Department webpage a list of approved projects, so members of the public can go to that page and also look up details on approved projects that may have not been constructed.
I'm just asking basically for, for the public comment that was saying they saw the plan, but they could have also asked, what, what is it really zoned for if that changed?
Yeah, they could ask that as well, yes.
Thank you.
Other comments or questions from council, or is there a motion? Councilmember Middleton.
If you're ready for comments.
Please go ahead. Please go ahead.
We've got a project here that all of us want to see completed. One where we have consensus between the developer and the neighbors regarding the number of hotel units and the number of condo units. What there's not consensus on is the number, or the height of 12 of the condo units. I think from my perspective, the design that was presented and approved in 2019 was reasonable. And to make a change of 20 feet in height, raising this, those 12 condo units to 46 feet is, is just simply a stretch too far. And that, I am happy to approve the number of units that are requested, but I'm going to struggle to approve the design for the 12 condo units on the northeast corner as presented to us.
Thank you. Other comments? Mayor Protem.
I mean, I've only, I haven't been involved in this project as much as my fellow council members here, but it does, I mean, I feel terrible for people in, in central court. I mean, you know, they, it has kept changing, but I also feel terrible for everybody in the neighborhood who's had an empty lot for a very long time. But it does seem like between all the plan, the planning commission approval and planning department and a settlement agreement that we actually may see a hotel and condo development being built. And I think that is probably the universal thing that everybody wants. And but my concern is that if we keep making more changes, I wish this were different, but I'm just concerned and, and I still have to hear other people's comments, that if we, if we go back to the drawing board, it will be years away again from getting to the next step. And I think we all agree that we need to get to this next step. And I know they've already started things in, in April, and the plans seem to be moving forward, that I'm just afraid that going back to or asking more changes when we, after all this time, that we'll end up having an empty lot for too long. So, but I do have to say, the project from the renderings in general, I think is a beautiful project. I agree with councilmember Holstage that it would have been better to have, conceptually, a convention hotel, especially considering the need for it now in terms of a lot more rooms. But I also, looking at the original approval that had a significant number, significant bigger property, I think this is better than it was then. So I'm happy to hear other comments, but I'm just concerned that, that this will drag on forever. Thank you.
Councilmember DeHart.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, reiterate, you know, it's, it's a wonderful project. And, and I think, you know, I'm a little challenged too because from reading the planning commission's notes, they, it was, it was discussed to look at a different height. And I think somewhere I saw that they were even looking at, that 38 feet might be even more acceptable in that particular area. But, you know, I, I think going from 26, which was approved and everybody, you know, it was endorsed and, and everybody surrounded it, up 20 feet to 46 is, is a challenge. I don't mind 46 feet in a lot of this, a lot of the development, the north villas. It's just that northeast, northeast corner where that, however many units are there in that northeast corner, which is, is, is the challenge for me on that northeast corner. So that's why I was earlier asking if there was, if there was a way to lower that northeast corner, you know, by the eight feet or 10 feet, to really bring it, bring it down in scale. And then to be able to show us a better architectural rendering of, of that setback and, and the tiered setback would make a difference. So I, I'm challenged with, with the scale next to a development right next door. And, you know, I'm, we definitely want the project, as councilmember Bernstein has said. And, you know, no one, no one wants something to, to go on and drag on forever. But it doesn't make sense to build something that is not going to be right. Entire project looks fabulous. There's just this one corner in the north villas that just is, is not going to be right for that, that part of the neighborhood. So I'm challenged with that.
Thank you. Additional comments? Councilmember Holstage?
Thank you. So hearing my colleagues to staff, if there isn't support for the request, what would be the process that would, staff would recommend? So would we continue this item to come back forward? Would we send it back to planning commission? What are all of our options?
You've mentioned two options that are possible there. Number one is to continue the item, to allow the applicant to address the concerns that you all have identified this evening. That would probably be the most expeditious route for this project. The other option is, yes, you could send it back to the planning commission and essentially have the applicant do the same thing that she would be presenting to you all with revisions to the north villas. You could also, as a third option, deny the application as presented. But again, I think the shortest route forward would be to continue the item and have the applicant come back to you.
Is that staff's recommendation?
Staff had recommended approval of the project, but if you did choose to continue it, yes, we could support the council in that action.
Thank you. And for the city attorney, are there impacts to the negotiations that we should think about as we decide whether to continue or send to planning commission or deny or approve?
So you currently have an agreement with them that arguably is expired, but it's been expired for a little while while we've continued down this process. So I don't think a brief delay to go back and look at this issue causes us a lot of change in circumstances or concern under the agreement. It would also give us the opportunity, if you wanted us to, to go back and look at that pre-procurement issue that you had raised. And then also, one of the councilmembers, I'm sorry, I don't remember which one, raised an issue about periodic security.
Thank you.
That we could go back and ask them about.
Thank you, appreciate that. And I was going to raise that, so thank you for reminding us. You know, for me, this issue, usually these come forward to us more baked, more ready, with more community support. It's rare for us to see so much opposition at this point. By the way, well done to the public commentators who had materials. I've never seen that before, and it was an impressive presentation. So it's hard to move forward with, with community opposition. I will say this is a site that is in section 14. It's in our central business district. The city does have a convention center hotel planned for this site, and we've wanted one for a long time. And there is significant height allowances that this is under, so we can't have our cake and eat it too. I know we all love the views, but we do have to think about, you know, we need a convention center hotel. We need a site that's developed. We can't have it looking like it's looking for 15 more years. And so, you know, we need to, we need to work together, and I think we can get there. And usually, these projects do get there. And I appreciate the developer has worked with the community and made a lot of allowances and been very thoughtful. I know Ms. Kibbe is a neighbor too. So it seems to me like at this point, we should continue the item and then have staff do that hard work with the community and maybe the developer and community can discuss. I would, if, I, I do have concerns about this project because it has been 15 years and because there have been significant, obviously, issues just with the market and the pandemic and all of the, the roller coaster that we've been on. But when I first campaigned in 2017, we had voters saying, we want the end of stalled development projects. And so city council has really considered bonding and other measures to ensure projects go forward. And so if we do continue it, I'd like the city attorney to discuss and see that the developers open to the pre-procurement of materials so we can really address any force majeure, unintended delays, bonding or personal guarantees, which we've done with the orchery and other projects that have been delayed and sat vacant, reasonable security on site, as Mayor Protem raised. And then anything else council would like to be considered as we, if, if there's support to continue this motion. And I was hearing the concerns. That's just a proposal. I'm not sure if there is support to approve or deny. Just putting that out there as an option to move forward.
Mayor Protem.
Question on process. If we continue, how, is there a time limit or is that months that it would take to do or?
What I would recommend is that we continue to a date certain. I would request that the applicant confer with us. Our next two meeting dates are either May the 25th or June the 5th. And so those would be the next two available meeting dates if they could come back.
And so if, so if we don't have, I mean, we may never get full community support, and I actually do disagree. We'd have moved forward a lot of projects that haven't had full community support or a lot of opposition. So, and it's horrible. I know it's not, it's not really a nice way ever to do a project, but we've seen this downtown. We've seen it, you know, a lot of different places that it's happened. So I'm just trying to find out, you know, if there's anything that would change or if we're just sort of kicking it down. I do want to see some of those things with security and, and like that, but that's part of the settlement agreement. Could that still be worked on?
Yeah. So if you were to continue the item, I would suggest that you reopen the public hearing, continue to a date certain, probably that first date in June would be more realistic because that would give us some time to meet and work through some language. And I suspect the applicant would probably need to do some redesign, so they would probably need a little time to do that. And then you could, with the hearing reopened and continue to a date certain, we wouldn't need to renotice the item. Otherwise, if you have closed the hearing and we continue to a date certain, we would still probably need to renotice. And yes, we would bring back the entire package to you at that point. So in the interim, we could go in and look at some of those issues that were raised in the settlement agreement also.
Can we ask, can we ask the applicant what would change? Or are we just going to come back with the same thing? And that's what I'm trying, that's what I'm sort of getting at. Like, if, if there's, if there's a possibility for a change, then that would be great? Or if it's deciding yes or no on this?
Months, because it takes time to redesign a project. And so we'd have to redesign that entire end. And June is not possible. July's not possible. August. Until that's done and we have approval, we can't finish our civil. We can't do our sewer and water. So it, to me, it's moving it down line. We, we'd have to recost it. We, there's a lot that has to happen. It's not just take off a corner of a building, unfortunately. It's a redesign. So, you know.
Thank you. I think that was answering my question. Thank you.
Are there any other comments or is there a motion by one of councilmembers?
I'll make another comment. You know, I think I heard up on the dais, this isn't, you know, we would love to have a convention center hotel, more convention center hotels in Palm Springs. But we're not, we're not building that. We're building something that is less a scale. And, and I think that makes a difference, you know, with this, with this overall project. And I think we've, we've waited so long. If we were to need to wait another six months for redesign, I, I think it's worth waiting six more months to get something that the developer is going to be proud of in this, this section, the north villas, and that the community is going to embrace. So I, I would like to see the continuance and ask the developer to, to, you know, look at the feasibility of trying to accomplish the, that lower height in that back corner from a design perspective and, and possibly, you know, talk with, talk, talk with the, do what you've been doing and having those conversations with the neighbors to, to get to that compromise. And, and let's, let's make it happen.
Is that a motion?
So moved.
Then I will second that motion.
All right, we.
If I can just get clarification, is that a motion to continue and to a date certain or just when the developer's ready to return?
What would you prefer? If, if we're to date certain July 1st? August 1?
Sorry, please wait for the mic so the people.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
It's on.
Put it on?
It's, it's on just now.
Turn on when the light is on.
Okay. It's not possible. And when we started redesigning the north back in mid-2022, and here we are, you know, mid-2023, it takes time to.
So if it, if we need six months, that's September 11. That could be date certain or before?
So that would just be a motion to continue, and we'll just come back when staff and developer are ready to present.
But can I just, if there's a new design, it has to go through planning and planning commission again as well? Or no?
No. Go ahead, Flynn.
Per the direction of the city council, you wouldn't necessarily need to have it go back through the planning commission unless there are significant changes to the site plan. If they are only modifying the northeast corner of a building, then no, I don't believe it would need to go back to the planning commission.
Councilmember DeHart.
And can the plan be approved for, with everything except the northwest, northeast villas?
That becomes a little bit more problematic in terms of trying to separate out a component of your design as kind of a phased project, if you will.
Yeah.
I, I think it would be cleaner and easier to approve the entire package.
Thank you. So, yeah, councilmember Holstage.
Thank you. And, and just to be clear, I, I appreciate that we often do have some opposition to projects, but some, usually there's been months of working together and years, really. And I know there has been years working together, but we've just seen more collaboration. And I know that that's been attempted here. So I personally can't support continuing for six more months for an completely new redesign. My concerns were, I'd like to see some changes to the agreement, and that seems just like clarification for pre-procurement processes of materials so we know we won't fall into force majeure land again because we can't afford it in terms of time. I very much want to see a project go forward, if it's this or another one. And that's why I said convention center hotel because it's, it just needs to happen. So I have a hard time agreeing to six more months. I would agree to, you know, a date certain. That's a shorter time if there's, you know, small changes that can be done. But a complete redesign just adds too much time to this project. And we've already had so much delay. So I'm going to have a, I'll probably vote no on the, the motion in front of us for that reason. I would support a continuance for some of the other issues, just for legal. But it sounds like for the city attorney, we wouldn't need a continuance. We could approve or deny and include that in the motion for some of the changes to the agreement if we were approved.
You could approve the agreement contingent upon the addition of a pre-procurement process for identified materials, security, the retention of a security company. And you could direct us to go back and discuss bonding and personal guarantee with them. Again, they've rejected that originally, so I can't, it would be up to Ms. Kibbe whether or not she wanted to commit to those things. It would probably make sense to continue it until the first week, the first meeting in June to allow her time to discuss with her attorney some of those issues.
Thank you. Any additional comments or do we want to move forward with the vote? Councilmember DeHart.
I'm fine with changing the, restating the motion that it's a, date certain June what? 5th. So we continue and date until June 5th. what? 5th. So we continue and date until June 5th.
So just for clarification, Mayor, I, I need you to reopen the public hearing and then take that motion to continue to June 5th.
Thank you. And then Councilmember Middleton, is that something that you would also support since you were the second?
Ah, yes.
Okay, thank you. So at this time, I want to re, go.
Continuing to June 5th doesn't mean there's going to be a redesign or expecting a redesign by then. Correct?
All right. Councilmember Middleton?
What I would hope that continuing to June 5th will allow the parties to do is to have an opportunity to step away from this crucible and reconsider what can and cannot be done. And they will come back to us with a proposal, knowing that there will be opposition to what has been presented to us tonight and that there will probably be support. And everyone is going to have to step back for a moment and consider what do they want to present to us on June 5th. And I don't want to make that decision for anyone. But I will make a decision as to what I'm going to vote for in terms of what I believe is in the best interest of the city, just like every one of my colleagues will.
Thank you. So at this time, I will reopen the public hearing and to for a date certain June 5th. And, well, I guess I'm reopening the public hearing and we'll vote and then we'll determine that it'll be June 5th. So we have a motion and a second to continue this item until June 5th. Okay, we have five, the motion passes to continue the item until June 5th. So the public hearing is reopened and will begin again on June 5th. All right. The next item is public comment on non-agenda items. This time has been set aside for members of the public to address the City Council on items of general interest within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city. Although the City Council values your comments pursuant to the Brown Act, it generally cannot take any action on items not listed on the agenda. Two minutes will be assigned to each speaker. We have one public comment card for Michael Joseph Pitkin.
Just to agree to have.
And for those of you who are leaving, if you can keep your voices down as you exit, we would appreciate it.
Michael Joseph Pitkin, over a year and a half, I have used Sunline Transportation Agency for all of my transportation needs in Palm Springs, California, personal and medical. Approximately nine months, I received my ADA 30-day monthly bus pass from DAP Health. When I stopped IEHP, I used Jewish Family Services of San Diego to pick up on a few day passes. I would walk 10 miles a day to pick up those passes. In a year and a half, I listened to Sunline bus drivers threaten every day about strike. I listened to CVAG.org talk of no official ratified contract. I would listen to Sunline bus drivers make excuses for lack of services by stating there are not enough drivers. I would listen to Sunline bus drivers explain half of their buses are broken and not working. I would listen to Sunline bus drivers explain Sunline is hiring and yet there is not enough buses for all the new hired drivers. In over a year, there is no way I was going to do Department of Rehabilitation in Palm Desert with strike always being threatened. There is no way I was going to take a job in Indian Wells with strike always being threatened. There is no way I was going to find apartments anywhere in Coachella Valley with strike always being threatened. I need access to my Palm Springs services. Lack of Sunline Transportation Agency reliability was dramatically impacted my life. I asked for a transportation summit in Coachella Valley and solutions resolved for this unreliable and constantly shrinking no-service Sunline Transportation Agency. There will not even, they will not even allow regular public meetings until they decide to make a change to their service. This needs to change and the public needs more input on this public transportation agency. Lastly, Chief Mills, reach out to the unhoused man at bus stop North Palm Canyons and Stevens. He has been lying on the ground for six months. I have notified four social service agencies. None have assisted. LGBT Center and Q Works, Queer Works rather state they would not contact him as that may be offensive. I find as a Q queer, queer unhoused individual, this is.
Your time is over. The next item is City Council and City Manager requests.
I submitted a card.
At this time, the pub, the public comment period is over. We didn't have any comments card from you.
I did. Check the cards from earlier. You'll see.
Okay, thank you very much.
That doesn't. That doesn't matter.
You had one public comment card that was submitted and that was for the top of the meeting.
Vote. One is for an.
You need to submit both. You need to submit two cards, not just one. Thank you. The next item is City Council and City Manager requests for upcoming agenda development. City Manager, do you have comments?
Yes, Mayor, members of council, just a couple of quick comments. These next three council meetings, as you can see, are going to be heavily focused on a lot of budget items. We, at the next meeting, we've, you'll see that we have several public hearings scheduled, a couple for historic designations. We will be bringing our annual comprehensive fee schedule forward for council's consideration. What I do want to mention on the June 5th meeting, that will be a joint meeting with the Measure J Commission. So we'll be bringing that forward. And then obviously going through the budget again on June 5th. What's done on here, obviously, we'll be working on the Dream Hotel project, coming back on that date. And then we'll also, I know we're working, we've got scheduled, we're going to be having some discussions with the Mayor Pro Tem about his discussions, interest in TOT and affordable housing. I think we're doing that next week. That could potentially be on for discussion on June 5th after those discussions. And then finally, on June 29th, we'll have final budget discussions for the, related to the biennial budget. And we'll be bringing forward a reserve fund policy for the council's consideration as part of the budget process. That's all I have. Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Do we have comments from council members in general?
Comments?
Mayor Pro Tem?
First of all, I want to congratulate Councilmember DeHart on today's Harvey Milk Breakfast, which was really one of the most special events. Really, 1,200 people, 300 kids, very moving, excellently produced, just really, really wonderful. So thank you for doing it on a council day too. So thank you. I also wanted to mention, I attended the Preservation Matters Symposium on April 27th and 28th, and it was really terrific, thanks to the Historic Preservation Board and the city of Palm Springs and our, members of our planning department. It was really, there was 15 different 20-minute presentations. It's on YouTube if you want to see it, everything from the desert inn to the Chi Chi to the Great American Canal that was built and swimming pools and our airport, and the economic impact of architectural tourism. And also thanks to the staff, Dodd Butts and everyone else were really excellently produced. I attended a Plaza Theater event for the, for their major donors, and it was exciting. I met the anonymous donor who gave $2 million. So that was very nice. And they are doing, continuing to do Tuesday night presentation, 7 o'clock at the Plaza Theater for anyone who wants to go and see the, the plans for what they're doing. And this past weekend, I attended the Health and Wellness Center opening at the Boys and Girls Club for cannabis education and prevention, thanks to a $3 million state grant, which I believe Veronica Goodheart was instrumental in getting for our city and goes to the point that there are grants out there and we should focus on them for our budget. And thank you. Those were my comments.
Thank you. Do we have other comments from council members? Councilmember Middleton?
Okay, thank you. I want to congratulate the Boys and Girls Club for the very successful opening of the new health center on their campus. And it was beautifully executed. I also want to congratulate our colleague on the Palm Desert City Council, Jan Harnik, who finished her year as the president of the Southern California Association of Governments with a very successful conference in her hometown of Palm Desert. It was a good, good event. I thank Tim Esser for, once again, a lovely evening, recognizing all of the individuals who were responsible for putting on the tour to Palm Springs event. And I would make note that the California Legislature LGBT Caucus, many of their members are in town this weekend for events. And the following weekend, the Congressional LGBT Caucus will be here. So we are getting an opportunity to show off Palm Springs once again to our friends and colleagues in Sacramento and Washington, DC.
Any additional comments from council? All right. Well, thank you all very much. Thank you to staff. At this time, we will adjourn the meeting. The next regular City Council meeting will be held on Thursday, May 25th, 2023, at 5:30 PM. Thank you.